Compromise, working together, may we find a common ground that will enable us to move forward with the shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and conduct ourselves in such a manner that we yield a fair decision. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm showing six o'clock with a regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners at 6:30 PM Tuesday, September the 16th, 2014, come to order. Thank you. We have, as I understand, we're gonna have a couple of amendments.
I can't hear you, Chairman.
Uh-oh. Yes, one, two, three. What's, uh... Hello, Communications? Come in. Come in, Houston. Can you hear it now? Here we go. Now can you hear me? Welcome. You wanna go through the pledge again, or in the prayer, you wanna just move on from here? Okay, we're gonna move on. The acceptance of the agenda. I understand we have two amendments to the agenda, and I'm gonna yield the floor to the distinguished gentleman from District 3 if he would make these announcements.
The first one, Chairman, we got 15B, and we want to add a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissions appointing a deputy county clerk.
Okay, we're gonna make that item 15B.
15B. And then 17C, we wanna add stormwater maintenance amendment between Henry County and McDonough Global LLC.
Okay, having said that, we have an amendment to the agenda that was published. This is somebody moved that we move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion from District 4, second District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Next, we have public comments. Citizens allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must, excuse me, you must sign your name, address, and specific topic you wish to speak about, nor you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Now, get rid of the thumb. Normally, when somebody comes up, they got five minutes. If there's no response or no dialogue from the board, I will have the clock, and at five minutes, if there's no dialogue, you'd be asked to sit down. The first time a commissioner asks a question, or somebody asks a question, and somebody responds up here, then obviously I cut the clock off, and that becomes a dialogue, and that way I don't, I don't shield the dialogue between public officials and the constituents. So, having said that, I take these, what we normally do is, when somebody signs up, the clerk, in this case here, it'd be the deputy county manager, has listed them one, two, three, four in order that they spoke. So if I get the clock right here, first would be Bill Tony, Police Department and the BOC. You get five minutes. State your name and the address for the record, please.
Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough.
I don't think you can hear. Let's, uh...
What you got? All right?
Can you hear now?
I can hear.
Can y'all hear him? Try the other one over there. Maybe you'll get closer or something. Maybe pull it up.
Okay.
Can you hear that? Okay.
All right, Bill Tony, 1652 Highway 155 North, McDonough, Georgia. On September the 3rd, 7 o'clock AM, I walked outside to a suburban sitting in my yard that stripped, all the tires and wheels stripped off of it. The lights, I have motion detectors, the lights came on. These guys were so brazen to where they did it in light. Okay. My neighbor across the street, he woke up to the same thing. His was stripped. Now, I've been before this board for the Police Department probably 20 times, and it's getting kinda old. This time, it really hit. We're 20 police officers down right now by Mr. Barham, and I counted 27 by another report from the Police Department. I've got a, I've got a, I've got a email here from Mr. Barham, asking them, after I came up here, the date on it, March the 24th of 13, you sent out, Gary, you sent out an email asking them to take a look at the Police Department, and I take my hat off to you for that. You laid out everything about going to Stockbridge to get the money, just like I suggested, and you sent it out. Thank you for that. Mr. Bowman, he sends back to you an email saying that, so you go to McDonough, and you get your police, your fire department in order on the rollback. Let's see, "I will vigorously oppose any run on Stockbridge without the city of McDonough reducing their rollback." So Mr. Bowman is trying to hold you hostage to get with the Police Department and go get the money. Your email was the 24th, so, and I'm sure you remember it. Okay, this bickering back and forth between y'all, we still don't have our police officers, and they still don't have the pay they deserve. Y'all gonna have to come together. This is a board of do-nothings. Now, we've got, now, Mr. Bowman, you don't have to worry about it. You got a police officer that stays on your property. Mr. Preston, he don't have to worry about it, 'cause he's got a guard at the gate where he lives. I do have to worry about it. This right here wasn't funny a bit, to be honest with you, to come out and find my car on blocks. So I don't appreciate, I don't appreciate it. Now, y'all can bicker between each other all you want to. I don't care, as long as you get something done. That's what I'm expecting out of you. You're my commissioner. I'm expecting it out of you. I don't expect you to fold to him, and that's exactly what you did. You folded, because he called you, he said, "This is not the city of Gary, this is the city of McDonough." That was your words. If anybody wants a copy of this, I've got copies. So I want you to take a look at it. I want you to get off your keister, and you get out there, and you start working and earning your pay. Now, you're an elected official, and you are too, but I'm lucky enough to have two of you, and I'm expecting something. I'm demanding that y'all get out there and take care of this Police Department. Get it in line. Get the 20 to 27 police officers back, exactly where it's supposed to be. Now, as far as negotiating with Stockbridge, you got the best thing in the world. If any one of y'all wanna sit down and let me show you my plan, I'd be more than happy to do it. So, and it can be done. They're in a position to where they need you more than you need them. Now, they should be paying their fair share all the way, and they're not. Y'all all know that they're not. I'm looking to y'all, you're there, you're getting paid to do a job. You work for these people out here. Get the Police Department in order. Give them the money they need, give them the police officers they need. I talked to chief, and he said he is over 20 down. I said, "I'd be right here to talk to y'all about it." And I'm here, and I'm totally expecting something to happen. Okay, that's about it. I certainly thank y'all very much, and I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Herbert Britt. Be sure to state your name and address, please.
I'm Herbert Britt, 161, 161 Simeon Place, Simeon Drive in Simeon Place. I'm just about oh, two tenths of a mile from that intersection that's gonna be East Lake and 20. I realize that's a state highway project, but it's also a SLOSS project, so county money's involved in that, too. I went to the last meeting they had up there, and quite a bit was said about putting a roundabout in there, which I think would be a terrible thing, because you've got all the, well, you've got four schools, four churches, and a fire department, fire station right there within three miles, three and a half miles of that intersection, and traffic has gotten really heavy on Georgia 20. They've gotta do something, but it does not need to be a roundabout. It needs to, they need to widen East Lake, put in turn lanes, add turn lanes on 20 there at the intersection, so that the fire trucks can get through when there's an accident or when there's a fire. Because with a roundabout, particularly during rush hours, around school times, around morning and evening rush hours, there's not gonna be a way to get through. It's gonna be backed up. It's gonna cost somebody their life. The other thing I'd like to talk about is our County Police Department. We've got some of the best-trained policemen anywhere. We're training them for all the counties around us, because once they come to work here, unless they get a promotion to sergeant, lieutenant, detective, or something like that, they never get another raise. Their pay stays the same if they stay here 10, 15 years. They don't get a cost of living increase, they don't get a longevity increase. I've never heard of a job anywhere that didn't pay the people that they trained enough to keep them on the job. Our county is losing people, trained people, qualified people, and good people, because they can't feed their families. I think the county commissions can do something about that as far as their pay is concerned. We can't make them stay, but we can't make them leave either. They're leaving because they can't afford to feed their families. So that's, that's my viewpoint. I hope that the county will take, give it due consideration and do something about, at least giving them a cost of living increases, or hopefully, some form of longevity increase for those who've been here, say, two years, five years, or whatever. They deserve more than starting pay when they've been here several years. And that's about all I've got to say about it. I'll just yield this time to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Sanders. I live at 305 Autumn Lake Drive here in McDonough, in Eagles Lake subdivision, and I'm here today to address the concerns of our neighborhood. I serve as the vice president of our HOA, and we all can agree that we wanna live in a peaceful, presentable, and safe environment, and we at Eagles Lake have concerns and issues that we want to address to you and hope that you will help us and consider them. Number one, and I did bring, I believe that a picture is worth a thousand words, and she may help me, Ms. Matthews, we're in between 2081, between 2081 and Bridges Road, it's a subdivision, we have 185 units, and at the beginning of our neighborhood, this is the sign coming in, you know, it has the speed limit 25 and no littering. Well, I took the privilege on yesterday to go and take some pictures, and this is some litter. It is excessive littering in our neighborhoods. I have called the community services. They have came and collected some of the litter, some of our residents have taken on the task of going picking up this litter. It is very embarrassing when my family or the neighbors, our neighborhood friends and family come to visit, because when they enter into this community, this is what is shown. And I collected a whole full bag, and the last picture, the last at the bottom, after picking it up, that's how our community look, our street coming into our neighborhood looks when it is decent. So I am asking if we can get some assistance. They have sent community service workers out, but it's seemingly that, thank you, that the motorists and the pedestrian continue to drop litter, and it looks bad. It looks very bad. Another issue is excessive speeding through our neighborhood. We do appreciate the G-Dot or whoever put up the new traffic light across from Phillips, 2081 and 2, Eagles Lake, Autumn Lake, but it has caused a lot of excessive speeding, and we know that we can't stop the cut-throughs, but I promise you, I have sat at our clubhouse and noticed at least every five minutes, 20 vehicles have came through our neighborhood, just the cut-through, and it's speeding. We have school-aged children, and we are concerned for their safety. So the speeding has gotten ridiculous. We had contemplated against speed bumps and speed humps, but we are again presenting this concern to you. Another thing is our noise nuisance. I don't know, I'm new to the county. I've been here a year in November. I'm new to the county. I'm not sure what the ordinance is for the noise level, but because of this speeding and the cut-through, we have motors coming through, and this is, this is not a lie. The noise and the car music so loud, it literally vibrates my house, and I can't sleep. I'm almost 55 and trying to sleep at night. 2:00 AM in the morning, you're hearing this booming. It is not peaceful, so we need your help with that. And lastly, we have a retention pond that is located on Autumn Lake Drive, and I did have some pictures, but it is so outgrown with grass and weeds, I'm afraid that it may have some problem when stormwater, something is retained, so we just need your attention. And thank you so much for hearing us.
Thank you.
I'm Kelly Turner. I live at 226 Jaybird Lane. I'm addressing the rezoning proposal at Le Guin Mill in Old Jackson. I moved to this area from Gwinnett County over 17 years ago to get away from the city and commercial life. I want to first, I would first like to express that we have a petition started with over 500 signatures. This development is unwelcome. Is this America, land of the free, or is it just Henry County, land of the controlled with no choices? Are you trying to make Henry County and Locust Grove unlivable? Growth does not always mean progress. This proposal is leaving the residents left behind with depreciated home values or no home at all, and strapped to pay for the repercussions with no choice. There are so many abandoned and vandalized buildings along Highway 81 and in Locust Grove as it is, and we need no more. This is unsafe for families and children who play here and get off the buses here, due to the high traffic and crime that this will bring. Many families live off livestock they own in this area, which will no longer be allowed. How is this okay? In the proposal, it states this will bring jobs to the area. Well, I have to say that I agree on that, because Henry County will have to hire more cops, which there's already a shortage of, just to keep this area safe. Dollar Generals, gas stations, et cetera, are the most targeted areas for robberies and crime. We don't want this in our backyard. This has been proven just in the last few years in our area of Locust Grove. If we wanted to live in a commercial area, we would move to Clayton County or live in Atlanta, but we choose to live here for the peaceful world. Mayberry Phil and others fought to this location for the very same reason. We have non-dollar Generals, four Family Dollars, five Dollar Trees, two Walmarts, and Tanger within a nine-mile radius of this area. I think we are good. It is sad, it is a sad and scary commercial takeover, and honestly, the act of a devil, all for some cash in someone's pocket, who is an outsider to this area. What if we took your homes in peace of mind? People will move and leave, foreclosed homes to be, or be forced out of their homes. How is this okay? I have to ask, how exactly do you, or the developers, sleep at night knowing this? You have the power to change this. Stand up for us, the people in the community. Remember, you are elected officials by the people.
Emily Voschel.
Mr. Chairman, would I be able to speak last if my concerns aren't addressed by other people?
I will let you speak exactly last. That's the only sequence I'll put you in. If you wanna yield your time, I'm gonna take you from number five. You now will be number 18. Yes, ma'am. Next, Joanne Barber. No, wait a minute.
Dr. Ann Harrow.
Let's have Joanne Barber, and I had two stuck together, so next will be Angel Jones. I'll recognize you now, since I've already mentioned your name, and Ms. Jones will be
My name is Joanne Barber, and I live in Willa, Greenview Street, right over, but anyway, what I'm here for, I'm here for the streets. I would, I signed the petition true enough, but I do not have a light. I have my papers and stuff here. I like to have a light, because it's simply the reason I live in a hole down, and it's lights over there, but it's not a light that I can see. I got broke in about three or four months ago at my house over there. I live, I'm mobile, and I live there. I've been in this city all my life. I'm 71 years old. I'm a senior citizen of McDonough, and like, I'm asking for a light, because I go out and I don't know what time I like to get back. I have a gate around my house, too, and people go to work at like 4:00 or 5:00. I used to go like that, 5:00 in the morning, I had to, I used to make biscuits up that hard, is at 5:00 in the morning, so they could be ready at 6:00. But what I'm saying, yes, I did sign the petition, but I got my tax form paper here. I do not have a light. I like to have a light, but I don't wanna pay for this private light, like they telling me. When there's lights over there, I don't understand why would you put two lights where it's already light? I don't understand it, so I wish you could explain that to me, and tell me what division did I live in, since I live over there. Could you do that for me, please? Tell me what, what division I live in over here where I live, so I can go to him and ask him why would they put two lights where it's already light, and then where I live is no light? And it's around this position, 'cause it's dangerous over there where I live. I like to come home 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. I have got a gate around my house and everything, and I get out of my car, open my gate, somebody could knock me in the head, which they did, breaking my, in my shadow that took all my things. And I think it's kinda wrong when you live by yourself. I got the lawyer on my side, that's true enough, but I don't understand why I'm gonna have to pay taxes for something that I'm not looking at. I don't have a light. And that's what I'm over here for, not trying to take, I just wanna know why don't you give me a light over there in the city where we live? And that's what I'm talking about. Yes, ma'am. So that's all I came for, trying to take up no time.
I'm gonna put this, for somebody to come out and check that.
I appreciate that, sweetheart. I sure would. Like I say, I'm 71 here. I appreciate that you come over there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Angel Jones, and I live at 156 Dunkins Mill Drive in Locust Grove, Georgia, and I too am here regarding the rezoning of Old Jackson Road and Le Guin Mill Road from residential to commercial. I'm aware of the future land use map, however, I would like to ask you to consider voting against the rezoning. I moved here about 18 years ago, and we moved here to escape the congestion and the crime and the commercialism. If this property is rezoned, the Dollar General will be within easy walking distance of my house. There'll be increased traffic, a potential for increased crime, and a nice neon sign displaying the Dollar General along with the strip mall. This is a nice rural residential area, and we'd like to keep it that way. Old Jackson Road, it wasn't meant to hold the tractor-trailers that will be needed to come in and stop the Dollar General. The traffic is gonna increase, there's no doubt it's gonna increase. We have a Dollar General within two minutes of our home. We have a Dollar Tree and a Walmart within five minutes, and that's if we don't get stopped by the train. If we get stopped by the train, it's just a little longer, but not much. We also have empty strip malls on Peaksville Road and Highway 81. It might be nice to think about renting those before we put another strip mall in. I'd venture to say that none of you would approve this rezoning if it were in your backyard, in your neighborhood, and we would like to ask you to please vote it down for our neighborhood.
I'm Jenny Kelly. I live at 1652 Highway 155 North in McDonough, Georgia. I'm here to talk about the police also, if, and I was wondering if Ms. Matthews could show my pictures, if she could help me. This is where the, our house, where they broke into the yard and put the car on blocks. It makes a bigger impression if you see the picture. You know, we moved here, too, because it was a nice, quiet county. We're on the main highway, 155, and, I mean, that, our front yard, and we have a light shining on the car, and at night, how can you sleep feeling like somebody's in your yard? We've gone through the house, closed all the blinds, and we get up and walk every night to go see if somebody's out in the yard stealing the tires. And they stole them on the guy across the street, like Bill said. But there's a lot of stuff going on in McDonough, just, you just heard on the news about Walmart, where the guy was flashing the little girl in the store. And then I have a friend, a lady who actually came to my house, and she had the key to my house. She was in the Walmart, and they stole her pocketbook with her keys in it, so she, so they stole her car, 'cause all they have to do is go outside and beep the beeper. And this keys had my house keys, so she had to inform everybody that had, that she had keys to their houses, which scared us, thinking that somebody could come into the house. But also, and then the ATM, you saw those on the TV where they put those fake things, and if anybody learns anything, if you go to an ATM, which we don't use, but if you stick your card in, all you have to do is grab that thing and pull it off, where you stick your card in, and, because it's stuck with double-sided tape, they said, so if you can pull it off, don't put your card in there. But there's just, our house has been robbed four times. The night we moved in in 1991, they stole our garage door opener. The second time, they broke into Bill's car and stole his cellphone, and the third time, they broke into our house and stole some stuff, and then this time, the tires on the car. And we asked, "Where were our policemen?", and we were told that they were in Stockbridge. So, I mean, that's what we were told. But also, we have so many friends that were policemen in McDonough, who have gone to other agencies, other police forces around, and it's because of their pay. They need it for their livelihood, for their families, and it, and we're just asking for better pay for the police and better protection for our county. We love this county. We love living here, but when you're afraid to stay in your own home, that you have to close all the blinds and the windows, I mean, it's scary. You're, and you walk out in the morning, and your car's sitting on blocks. It's unbelievable. I'm on a main highway, 155, right in the, for everybody to see. So all we're asking for is your help. We feel like we're not in the land of the free, just like she said. We feel like sometimes the commissioners are working for their own goods and not for the county, not for the people in the county. So we would just really appreciate your help. I know there are ways that y'all can cut expenses. I take care of the expenses that I accompany. Let me come help you. I'll find some ways to cut it. I can think of several right now, and I would be glad to come and help, free of charge. I'll come do it, and I'm sure I could find some more people who'd do it with me. And that's all I've gotta say. Just look out for our police.
I'd like to make a comment. Really appreciate you coming out, I do, and I know I was kinda laughing at Bill, but me and Bill go on at each other, and people know that, so... So most people know that we do. But just, just a little bit of things for your information now. At my office building in Stockbridge, they broke in and stole my air conditioning units. They broke in, stole the front end out from under my truck. This is Stockbridge, where all the police are supposed to be riding around not doing anything. But this is in Stockbridge, they did that. I lived in Eagles Landing for a pretty good while. They, they came in, I don't know how they got in. It's a gated community, but they stole my Explorer out of the driveway. Now, you know, out of the driveway, they took my truck. I want to let you know, you're not the only one that gets hit. You know, we, we, I'm assuming that some of these have had it happen. But they broke in the house over on Airline Road that we were doing a renovation, so my daughter can move in. They took plumbing out from under the basement, all the copper. They took the air handling units and the other stuff out. So, I mean, it happens to everybody. And I think what people assume is because commissioners are up here and nothing happens to us. I know Bill made a comment about, my son-in-law's police officer, been one for sixteen years. And yes, there's, he's got a car sitting there in the thing. And you would think nobody'd come in there, but somebody came in, stole tools out from my shop. And we're really right, I mean, you know, it's hard to get into my shop. I've actually put some more locks on it, so they can't get in now. The honest people can't, the crooks still can't. But you're not the only one, and I, and this is terrible, to wake up and find your truck sitting outside, no wheels, no tires, that's terrible. At the, I mean, I don't know that one of our finest, when these guys right here are some of the best, I don't know that if they would have actually been able to do anything about it unless they had been there and seen it go on, because these guys are fast. They move in, then they move out. But the Stockbridge references, I just wanted to let you know that the Stockbridge references, I was broken into, things were stolen, stolen out of my, and I got gated, locked-up fences, and they cut the fence and came in. So, I mean, you're not the only one, and people are not, the police officers are not just riding around in Stockbridge and not handling the other end.
I know they're not, and I did not say that. I said, we needed more protection over in our area also. And I know Stockbridge needs it, too. Just like our company down in Jenkinsburg, we've been stolen from down there. Every place needs it. All I'm saying is, we need it, too.
Right, I understand that.
We do need it. I know you've been, think, people have been broken in all over.
Right.
I'm not just singling out one person.
Right.
And I'm not saying I'm the only one. And I have a lot more. Jim Fitzpatrick, that owns a little, he has rocking chairs and they do the, the curtains. He just told me today that his cameras were stolen, his security cameras. So I could only list a few. I only had five minutes, so I was trying to go, I could list more.
Well, no, you, you got a little extra time, because I entered into a dialogue with you. But I just, I'm not trying to be adversarial. I'm just saying that things happen to everybody.
I'm the only one. I'm saying everybody. There are plenty of people that have had things happen. And all we're asking for is protection. And I've never said the police are not good. I did not say that. You can insinuate what you want. I appreciate the police. My, I've, I've got family that are police, just like you do. They're not in Henry County. I don't blame them.
Yeah, well, my comment was more along the lines of that they would have had to have been driving down your street almost to have caught them, and, and simply would not have that many police officers to cover every street at every time. That's all I'm saying. And we're short. We know we're short of police officers. Been short since Isolator, so. Anyway, I appreciate it. That's, that's all I want to say.
We were just told they were in Stockbridge, so that was why I said that. That was the exact words.
Right.
Where is our police? In Stockbridge. So I appreciate you listening.
I guess they were in Stockbridge, where my stuff was stolen, too, so. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Nolan.
I'm Sandy Nolan. Sorry. I live at one five two three Cohen Drive, which is on the corner of Cohen and Old Jackson. I would just like to express my concern of the rezoning that's going to be at Lequien and Old Jackson. We live in a residential area. We don't need another store. We have many in the area. I don't understand why it's necessary to saturate the area with Family Dollar and Dollar General stores. We have enough. It is residential. We have a school on that road. Peaksville, there is a Family Dollar store there. We have enough. So please reconsider this rezoning, which I think the hearing is gonna be Thursday night. Thank you, that's all.
Just for clarification, the, I understand that the zoning board will hear this Thursday night. After they hear, they will merely make a recommendation, and later, somewhere in a timely manner, they'll put it on the agenda for the BOC to make, to make the ultimate decision on it. So what you need to do is be sure that you track this, and be here Thursday night, and voice your opinion, and also be here when the Board of Commissioners would vote that particular night to approve or disapprove of the zoning, and be here at that meeting as well, too. So having said that, Ms. Sharon Roach. Ma'am? I'm sorry.
Can I also go to the end?
You want to be at the end, okay? You're moving from ten to eighteen. Okay. Ms. Davis, Mary Lynn Davis.
My name is Mary Lynn Davis. I live at three five four Courtney Lane in Locust Grove. I live in Austin Creek Subdivision. I'm here to ask for help of the rezoning of Old Jackson Road and Lequien Mill. It is to be rezoned commercial, as you've been told several times. We have a quiet neighborhood. We have several, several children in our neighborhood that are disabled. And I mean, some of them have large disabilities, which I won't go into that, but they are disabled children. There is so much traffic on our road now, trying to get in and out of our subdivision onto Lequien Mill, to go to the elementary school that's down the road, and to go to the four-way stop at Old Jackson and Lequien Mill. Now, the traffic at, from four o'clock till whenever is really bad. I mean, and to put another Dollar General or Family Dollar or whatever it would be with a strip mall, that is going to make even more traffic in that area. So that would be, in a short period of time, we'd have to have a red light. We're gonna have to have more policemen in the area. And that's costly. But I just wish that some, someone could help us and reconsider the rezoning of that spot. We moved out of Riverdale. We lived there twenty-seven years. And when we moved, when we moved to Riverdale, the airport got us. I mean, we have just relocated from one time to another. We've lived here eighteen years. My husband and I are both retired. Our home is paid for. It's a small, modest home. But we would never be able to get out of our home now to purchase anything like what we have. And it's because we've put money into it all these years. But the value of our houses are already cut. And we feel the pain from it. And to be quite frank, I'm seventy-one, and I'm not ready to go to a nursing home, or an old folks' home, or whatever you want to call it. But if we were to happen to lose our home, I mean, we don't know where we'd, we'd be. We don't want to be with our children. I mean, it would be a big decision, because we wouldn't be able to get any money out of it. So I wish that somewhere down the line, it could be reconsidered, not to make it commercial, to keep it either, even a condo or an apartment or anything would be better than Dollar General, which would probably have a strip mall, that would probably have a liquor store, a pizza place that sells beer with traffic coming in and out. I mean, it would really be dangerous. And the crime would be rampant. We left the crime area. That's why we came to Henry County, because it was quiet, peaceful. I mean, we've lived in College Park. And my brother's a retired policeman from College Park. Praise the Lord, he's retired. But, I mean, you know, we've been all these different situations, and we understand that people have to make a living. And everybody wants to make a buck. But why make a buck off of our little subdivision in this radius that he, this man wants to, that does not know us from Adam's house cat and could care less about where we go, where we're gonna be displaced? But if you could help reconsider and help us, we certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Bobby Bullard. Say again?
It's a later agenda item.
Does that mean you want to be last? Jennifer Rosenbaum.
Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Rosenbaum. Good to see you all again. I'm actually here tonight with a few of the other individuals here opposing this rezoning of Old Jackson and Lequien Mill Road. We do understand that you, this is not before you all. We do know that the zoning board is meeting this Thursday. We do plan to be there. And we do plan, whatever their recommendation may be, to be back in front of the Board of Commissioners when it comes before you all. We did want to go ahead and give you a little bit of a presentation here tonight of some of the facts that we put together and some of our major concerns. So if you'll follow me through this four-minute, ten-second presentation, I'll be more than happy to oblige any questions you may have. Our first concern is that we are, we believe that there is going to be a bigger tax burden versus the tax benefit that comes with this Dollar General that's proposed to be there. We know, and specifically I know, I've been to Commissioner Moss's town hall meeting on August ninth, when he had the T-SPOS director there, as well as many other people, who discussed how much the infrastructure in Henry County costs. Additionally, I looked at a few of the T-SPOS expenditure reports today just to familiarize myself on how much it costs to widen a road, add a turning lane, repave, recondition, add a traffic light. These are very expensive items. And Commissioners, I'm not going to insult your intelligence. I know that you've probably seen the numbers before. You know they're expensive. I know they're expensive. So I would just like to move right along for the fact that the cost-benefit analysis here, you all are in charge of the purse. You all make decisions of how our money's going to be spent. And I would encourage, when you're looking at this proposal, that you look at what the benefit to the taxpayers is gonna be. Here you'll see I have a property tax assessment. It's the bill for the Dollar General that's on Peaksville, less than two point something miles away from the proposed site. As you can see, and as I well know, I went through a tax lesson with the county manager and the commissioner during the rollback series of hearings that we had. So I've come to learn how to read this thing pretty well. But just for the people in the audience and for yourselves, if you'll go down to the bottom line that says Henry County Tax, you'll see, if you go all the way across the board, that the net tax that we would get in our general fund from that Dollar General that's on Peaksville is four thousand four hundred four dollars and sixty-four cents a year, what we get in property tax from that Dollar General that's already in place. Granted, I know that there's a little bit of fluctuation, so it's probably not going to be the exact same for the new Dollar General that's proposed, but I would pretty much estimate that it's gonna be somewhere in that ballpark. And I'm not gonna leave you hanging with saying you're only gonna get a benefit of the four thousand four hundred four dollars and sixty-four cents a year, because I would also add that we probably will still have the T-SPOS during that time, and so we will be getting one percent of their sales. From a colleague of mine, he did the research, and we found out that Dollar General averages is about one, one and a half million dollars in their stores that are in rural areas. We projected that would probably be less, since there is a Dollar General right around the corner from this one. But just for, just for purposes, if it is one and a half million, then the taxpayers would be getting ten thousand five hundred dollars in their SPOS money each year. So we're talking about anywhere from fourteen thousand to twenty thousand dollars back in tax benefits each year versus the millions we are going to have to invest in doing the infrastructure of the roads, the traffic that we're gonna have to put up with, the semi-trucks that are gonna be driving on these rural roads that, that these rural roads weren't meant to handle. And so now we're going to have to address the roads all the way down, so that semi-trucks have access to them and can now drive on them. So if you would just keep these numbers in mind as we move on to the other issues. We have, we have several negative impacts on locals, two of which I will hit up, and other people have, as well as the decreased property value and the increase in crime rates. You can see I have several times listed where Dollar Generals, specifically in Henry County, have been held at armed robbery, where people who worked in the store have been personally injured, and where the police in our county, who we do appreciate, actually were able to find the people. Imagine that, Commissioner Bowman. These Henry County fine police officers were able to find the people. So I think if we gave them the right amount of money, they, they could do a lot more. Additionally, finally, finally, I just ask that you take a look at the quality of, the quality of life that will be diminished. Several people in this area own cows.
Five minutes is up.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Lewis Masters.
My name's Lewis Masters. Also, I live at two three four J-Bird Lane. I'm also here opposing the Dollar General. I've, I've been a fireman for twenty years and recently been selling real estate. I've started selling real estate in oh seven. That was not a good, good time to be in. But I've watched the market do a lot. I've seen the market take a turn for the better. I've been struggling. Things are getting a lot better for us. Dollar Generals will not be good for our community. Will not be good for our area. You know, for that location, we have schools on, there's a four-way stop. We have schools on three ends. Three ends of the, of three ways are schools at the end. I remember when that four-way stop was a two-way, and I've heard lifelight. And for you people that have kids, to hear a helicopter lifelight land close to your house when you have high school kids driving is a scary feeling. And I know it's a four-way stop now, but if we put a Dollar General there, and that starts attracting young kids that are gonna work there, and then you've got the high schools down the street, we might as well pull those four-way stop signs up, because we're gonna be back in the same spot where we didn't have the four-way stop. We, but we all know how that goes. Sixteen-year-olds are invincible. It's just not a good idea all the way around, fellows. Now, I'm not saying that we couldn't, you know, we could, I'm asking the county to maybe do an impact study and seeing what would be best for that area. Dollar General would not be. We are saturated with Dollar Stores. We don't need that. There's gotta be something else that can prosper for that community, for that area, for all of us. There's just, there's no way to cut it. It's just not a good idea. Hopefully, you guys will look at that and understand and see, and see it our way. I don't know what else to say to convince you guys. Hopefully, you'll see it our way and understand and appreciate it. Thank you, fellows.
Thank you so much. Amy Delangelo. Amy Delangelo.
I also, I also have a petition here, five hundred names, that was given to me on the way in.
Could you be kind enough to give that to the? This young lady right here, please, for record. Thank you. Ms. Delangelo.
Hi, I'm Amy Delgado. Bo Moss, you were my commissioner. I live at twenty forty-eight South Ola Road in Locust Grove. I've lived in this home I grew up in from six years old to present, thirty-seven-plus years. I've lived in this home I grew up in from six years old to present, 37-plus years. When my parents built our home on South Ola Road in 1977, it was a nice, quiet dirt road which joined LeGuen Mill Road, which was also dirt. I loved growing up in my home, almost two acres of land with very little traffic passing through. We could ride our bikes, play in the ditch, or just go for a walk. Then one day, the road crew came in and over a couple of days, maybe a week even, those dirt roads were paved. I bought my childhood home from my mom in 1994 because I love country living, having room for a large garden and room for my dogs to run. It's really the only lifestyle that I've ever known. I raised two well-rounded, successful young men in that home. It's a place where we all call home. My sisters come from out of town. All three of them say, "I'm coming home," and they come to my house because that's our home. That's our heritage. Now, there's an elementary school as well as a daycare center, just 1.8 miles on LeGuen Mill Road. We needed those in that area. They have turned a once two-way stop road, LeGuen Mill and Old Jackson, into a four-way because of all the traffic and the wrecks that occurred. The property that's being proposed belonged to Ms. Elsie Childs when I grew up. She never had children, to my knowledge. If she did, they were deceased. I understand that in her will, this property was left to her great nephews, her great nephews. She didn't want our quiet little community become subject to big city life and convenience it has. That parcel used to grow soybeans and probably cotton before that, necessities to our agriculture. She wanted it to remain quiet and tranquil. I would like to say on behalf of my family that we do not commercial, that do not commercialize the property in our area. My property is just a couple acres behind that corner lot that some outsider wants to come in and rezone to commercialize. I don't want my home jeopardized with having a store built in my backyard, no matter what the convenience is. When you start building up a commercial area, that just brings in crime and over time unkept properties. I live five miles outside of town. I'm not bothered to drive that short distance to get things for my family that we need. Lastly, have you considered the impact to commercialized property that in this location may have on wildlife, the environment, water purity? Because a lot of us are still using wells. Air quality to humans, contamination caused by soil disruption of previously agricultural producing property of the Tussah Hall Reservoir since two major contributors are on each side of that location. So I ask you, isn't there enough commercial property in that empty space available already? There's Keys Ferry Road that's got availability. There's Highway 81. There's rental space right behind the Dollar General store on Peeksville that's still available. So I ask you, would you want this in your backyard? We are your constituents, Mr. Moss, out here. We voted you in. We don't have a choice but to vote you out if you don't help us. We need backing on this. I'm sorry, this is my home. I do not need the traffic coming in and out of my backyard from somebody robbing a store. Everybody around me are starting to put up fences. That's not right. Just last, over the summer, my cousin, four miles down the road, was hit. Another one was hit on the other side of me, a mile down the road, while they were gone to the doctor's office between nine o'clock and one o'clock in the morning. There's crime already coming to our area. If you've got to make this property commercial, put a park in for our children and our grandchildren to play in. We don't need another store because the store's going to come in, just under five acres, they're not going to want to put in a red light, they're not going to want to turn it, put in those turning lanes. They're just not going to do it as proposed in those documents that I have in my, in my car. They're, they're just under five acres, 4.97, with a retail space available. For what? A liquor store? My home church, Philippi Baptist Church, is not even a quarter mile down the road. That would be a shame and a disgrace to put something in there that can bring in a liquor store or any kind of beverage-producing product that will consume and make you drunk to where you get behind the wheel of a car and kill one of our kids. Because I tell you, we have kids riding their bikes, we have kids that are walking, we have people jogging. All kinds of people are out and about because it's country living. That's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Casey McDonald.
Good evening. My name's Casey McDowell. I live at 1020 Ezekiel Way, Locust Grove, Georgia. My husband and I just recently moved to Locust Grove. We built a house. My husband, he's from Raleigh, Raleigh Durham, North Carolina. At the time of our engagement, he was living in Nashville, Tennessee. We could have very easily moved to Nashville, but I convinced him, a lifelong resident of Locust Grove, Georgia, to move here. Not only move here, but hey, let's build a house because we're going to be here for a while. It didn't take long to persuade him after driving around the city of Locust Grove just a few days and he fell in love. He fell in love with the countryside. He fell in love with the small-time town feel and he fell in love with the fact that we were only 40 miles from Atlanta. We could get to a city if we wanted to, but as far as our house, we wanted the small-town feel. I'm a product of Locust Grove, as I said. We moved here when I was eight years old and to be honest, I thought we had moved to Green Acres. It was such a change from Riverdale, Georgia. And to be honest, when I went through the school system, I wanted to get out of Henry County. I said there was so much more out in the world that I wanted to go be a part of that I was going to run away. And I did. I went away to college. I went away to work. I went away all around the world, all around the world, back to Atlanta. I worked for CNN for a year when I decided I wanted to be an educator and if I was going to be an educator, then I kind of got slapped in the face with, "Well, I really want to do it in Henry County." So reality kind of sunk in. I had the chance to get out. I did it and yet I came back. So good job, guys. I'm your return on investment. You did a great job. I got my degree. I got my master's. And like I said, I went away and I came back. But I came back to Locust Grove because of that beauty. I came back because of the small-town feel and I came back to work at Locust Grove Middle School where I want, I very much so want, to be here the rest of my life. I, I found myself looking into retirement. I was like, okay, I can stay here for 30 years and the teacher retirement system of Georgia will have my back, but Henry County has to have my back now. It took me some convincing to get my, my husband to be here and I sure do hope I don't have to do any more convincing. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Barbara Ayers.
I live at 188 Duncan's Mill Drive in Locust Grove. I'm here about the rezoning as well. I'm a mom, a teacher, a taxpayer, and a voter and lived in Locust Grove for 18 years. I am not here to oppose the Dollar General. I am here to oppose rezoning to any type of commercial in our community. It doesn't matter if it's a Dollar General, a liquor store. We do not need another business. We can drive our butts three to five miles in any direction and be to any given store or restaurant, gas station you can imagine. We do not need this. We would like to keep our green space. As a teacher, I can tell you I've worked in two types of communities, rural and non-rural. You have more productive, healthier children in a community like ours and when are we going to stop overdeveloping all of these communities so that our children will have a place to go? We need to, we need to do this for our children, the elders in our community that have been here for many, many years and everybody in between. Please help us to say no to overpopulating Henry County once again with what little bit of hometown feel we have left.
My name is Pete Kinnickel. I live in, on LeGuen Mill, 1924 LeGuen Mill, Locust Grove, since 1987. I first saw the blue sign indicating commercialization of the corner lot about two and a half, three weeks ago. I got a copy of the proposal. I made about 150 copies. I took them door to door, talked to possibly 50, 75 people, talked to a few people that were very, very passionate about it. With the help of Bo Moss, we organized a meeting last Saturday. We didn't know if there were going to be 10, 20. Luckily, Bo got us a large enough area at the rec center. There were 149 adults that were present. The grassroots approach took off like fire. Sorry about the metaphor. It, it grabbed everybody's at their soul and you heard the presentations of these individuals and how they feel. Once they heard, there was no doubt, all the neighborhood is not interested in this I just wanted you to know that this all took place within about a week and a half. It's not something that took a lot of leveraging to get the interest. Just to let people know, and the people that I spoke to, about 95% were vehemently opposed, the other 5% not sure. At the meeting, Bo can attest and tell you how passionate and concerned they all were. Thank you.
Ms. Emily Voschel, it's your turn.
My name is Emily Voschel and I live at 2010 Old Jackson Road and I've lived there for a little over 12 years. You know the story because you've heard everybody say it, but I just want to say that I agree with them. We moved here because it was rural, it was county, it was away from the commercial aspects of living in this area. There's enough commercial in the area already. If you look at this, where do we put this?
You put it right there. Right there. That's it.
Great. If you look at that slide, you can see where they are in our area. We have our fair share of low-level retailers and we don't need one on every corner. You'd probably agree with that. One of the things that I learned at our meeting this week was that not only does Dollar General come in when we don't want them to be there, but they decide who comes in after they come in. We don't have a say, is what I've been told. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what we were told. That really upsets me because I live at the corner of LeGuen Mill and Old Jackson. I could walk there in one minute, less than a minute probably, well, half a minute. Anyway, my home is going to be greatly affected there. If we have to give up property for roads, it will be my property. When we see the trucks go by, when I go, sorry, I get so nervous. When I leave for work in the morning, I have to sometimes wait for the traffic a while before I can get out of my driveway. It's very busy. When this comes through, it's going to be much, much more busy. It's not going to be the kind of place that we want our rural home to be. It's going to change the look of the whole area, change the feel, and also it's going to change the fact that we don't have a lot of crime in our area. I've talked to one police officer recently and I said, "What's it like compared to other areas?" And he said, "You live in the best place for crime." And I'm real happy about that. I love that, but it will change if Dollar General goes in. Also, the house values will go down. People have already talked about that. That's a given. The only persons that are going to, if you look at what she's done for the county taxes, they're not going to be what people think they might be. The only people that are going to benefit by this are the two employees at Dollar General and the Dollar General store if we choose to support them. I don't think many people here will choose to support them in their own neighborhood.
Sharon Roach, you're last.
Hi, my name is Sharon Roach and I live on Old Jackson Road and I'm very, very close to the corner where they'll be putting the Dollar General. Where, where the rumble strips are at the stop sign is where my driveway is. So I'm very close to it and I know a lot about the traffic that comes through there. And I know that there's a lot of reasons to not want this, but it is going to cost a lot to widen those roads. Buses cannot even get turned on those roads at that corner to turn around, I mean, to turn onto, from Old Jackson to LeGuen Mill or LeGuen Mill to Old Jackson. It'll have to be widened. It was a two-way stop and there were so many accidents there, they had to put up four-way stops and there were a lot of bad accidents. I live on a curve just before you get to the stop sign and we have had people come into our yard because they don't judge it properly and we've even have a tree in the yard that has markings from where people have hit our tree and someone has died from it. So it's not a good location in which to put anything. It will cost the county a lot to upgrade the area through there, to make, make it able to have anything commercial. There's a lot of things to take into consideration on this. There's a lot of reasons, the property value. And like some have mentioned, it will not be supported by the people who live there so it won't make money from us. It'll have to be people from outside of the community, which there's guaranteed to be more traffic if that's the case. I work 37 miles from where I live and I travel it every day because I like the area where I live and I like where it's at and I just spent $20,000 to upgrade my house and my property and this is not what I want. This is not going to be good for the community and it's totally not good for me. And I just, we're here today because, not because you're going to be voting on this right now, but because if it goes past the zoning area, it will come to you and we need you to help us to stop this from going through. And we really would like for you to listen to what we have to say and know that there are a lot of people behind not wanting this in our community. And I'm sorry, my voice is shaking up. I'm not very good at this. I never talked in public, so it's really hard for me. And I just wanted to mention that this is something that's very important to all of us. Thank you.
Next, we're going to have a proclamation, Constitution Week, Daughters of the American Resolution, and our communication director, Melissa, will read the proclamation.
Chair, could we have a five-minute recess?
Yes, I have.
I'd like to go.
Okay. The chair's going to call for a five-minute recess.
Good evening, gentlemen. Tonight, we have a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. Whereas September 17th, 2014 marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia in 1787. And whereas during Constitution Week, it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the anniversary of the Constitution with appropriate ceremonies and activities to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas, for more than two centuries, the Constitution has presided as the supreme law of the land, keeping our leaders true to America's highest ideals and guaranteeing the fundamental rights that make our country a beacon of hope to all people in search of freedom and justice. And whereas, we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect And whereas, we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege provides. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third shall be known as Constitution Week in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we join with other communities across the nation in recognizing the importance of our Constitution and reaffirming our rights and obligations as citizens of this great nation to protect this founding document. This sixteenth day of September, two thousand fourteen, signed by Chairman Tommy Ann Smith, Henry County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Can we get a picture, please? Next, we'll recognize Mr. Connor made a request to appear before the board to discuss the building departments. Mr. and Mrs. Connor. You will have fifteen minutes. And if any of the board members makes a comment or asks you a question or something, then it's a dialogue and it's stopped. The clock will stop. So state your name and address for the records, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Sean Connors, and this is my wife, Cheryl. We stay at one-thirty-three Traditions Lane in Hampton, Georgia. The reason why we called, wanted to talk before the board, it deals with the director of the building department and his lack of dealing with our situation in our backyard. On thirteen January, two thousand fourteen, we sent Commissioner Brian Preston an email concerning the sinkhole, two sinkholes and easement in our backyard. Commissioner Preston then sent the email to Mr. Sorensen. And I sent Mr. Sorensen a packet of twelve citizens with their complaints about how Talon Homes is not taking care of the subdivision of Traditions at Crystal Lake. Well, we met with Mr. Sorensen on four-twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, at ten o'clock in his office. Mr. Sorensen pretty much told us that he did not know if it was a violation for sinkholes to be a problem in Henry County. He then further said that it is not his responsibility to save the world. He went on to say also that he could not refer us to anyone within the organization to help us.
And we weren't looking for him to save the world. We was looking for him to help us.
And so then he said, "Well, let me get on the computer and let me find where I could help y'all." Well, this went on for about twenty minutes, and he couldn't find any solution to help us. So my wife said, "It's time for us to go." So we left. And about that time, we talked with Ms. Wiley in the legal department, and she in turn turned us on to Mr. Wings in code enforcement. Well, Mr. Wings cited Talon Homes for the violation of burying trash. We had a court hearing on eight-fourteen-fourteen in Magister Court Jones, Judge Jones, and he found Talon Homes guilty of violation of R-three zoning district, and he called it inert waste-burying trash in our backyard. Talon Homes was fined five hundred dollars, and that was it. The problem we felt, and we still have, is when we tried, when Ms. Wiley tried to pull their license, their license in Stockbridge, but their permits are in Henry County. So Henry County could not pull their license. We contacted Stockbridge. Stockbridge says, "Well, the violation wasn't in Stockbridge, so we can't do nothing." So we are stuck with two trash pits. One, forty feet by thirty feet, they went twelve feet down and buried trash. The other one was thirty feet by thirty-five feet, they went eleven feet down and buried trash.
That's malicious.
And so now, we said, now only thing the builder was cited for was five hundred dollars. But, and nothing else can be done. And so we're asking as citizens, taxpayers, why are builders giving a slap on the wrist? But we, as taxpayers, if our house fall in, if my backyard fall in, if my kids or my grandchildren fall in these holes...
Who's liable?
Who's liable?
And why is Derek Sorensen allowed to still be in his position if he doesn't know his job? Might as well hire me, because I've gotten a lot of information concerning this trash pit versus what he has not done. It's ridiculous. And now, my husband of thirty-six years, serving this country for you all to be here freely, thirty-six years this man has given, then he has to come out the military and then fight a war out here when he should be just relaxing in his backyard, a new home that he, we just purchased a year and a half ago. And then they say, "Oh, thank you for your service." Really?
Because we bought the home in February of two thousand thirteen. The sinkhole started manifesting in October of two thousand and thirteen, and we've been dealing with this problem since October of two thousand thirteen with Commissioner Preston. He has been in on it from ground one. And we have talked to everybody here, up here in Henry County, even talked with you, Chair, you know? And talked with now Assistant Director, Ms. Shea.
Matthew.
Matthews. And so our problem is, why are builders, now we're finding, we've got builders in the next subdivision over, they are now going to come before y'all with the same problems. They got sinkholes in their yards, and the builders are only getting a slap on the wrist because they have found the loophole that they can get licensed in one county and build in another county. But the county that they find, that they are found guilty cannot do anything, but my lawyer says that the county can. He says they could file a continual violation, quick quote, tow, meaning that now they can go after the permits of the builder in that county. Because when we talked with Ms. Wiley, she said that they couldn't do anything because the license was in Stockbridge. But our personal attorney said, yes, they can. It's called continual violation, quick quote, tow. And then they could pull the permits in Henry County and make the builder take care of, taking care of this sinkhole. Now we got to come out of our pocket and spend thousands of dollars, which is not right, because we pay y'all to take care of us. But we got to do y'all work for y'all. That's not right.
And again, this is retirement. We're retired. And then we have to come out of our retirement to clean up something that's supposed to be illegal.
And then the director of the building department says he don't know if it's illegal to bury trash in Henry County.
That's been fifteen years. It is.
So he's in a position, but he can't help us because he don't know his job. But he's hired by the commission to take care of us in Henry County, but he don't know Henry County's business. He don't know the laws of Henry County.
I'm going to start a dialogue. It's going to be real short. It's going to be real short.
Yes, sir.
This is going to seem like we prolong an issue. But obviously, we're not going to resolve it tonight.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to do is to have a conference with the county attorney sometime this week or first to next week, and let's revisit this. And I'm saying, I'm with you. I think Henry County can do something.
Yes, sir.
I don't know exactly what it is. I told you that when we had the meeting.
Exactly.
And I was going to wait and went to court, and we found out that according to the courts, five hundred dollar fine resolved the issue. They paid the five hundred dollars and walked off, and they leave you with a fifteen or twenty thousand dollar debt to restore your backyard.
Yes, sir.
So what I'd like to do is just set up a meeting with the Sheri, the Assistant County Manager, and counsel sometime about, probably the first to next week, and I'll let Sheri set a meeting up with our executive assistant, and we'll meet and we'll find a way. Because I'm, and I think the board has to do this. I mean, something's missing in this picture.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, we do prohibit the burying of trash. We have an ordinance for that.
Yes, sir.
I even know that. But in order to, it seems like something's missing when you just find somebody five hundred dollars and they walk away, and you still got the problem. So if y'all would find that acceptable...
Yes, sir.
Now, if you want to use the rest of your minutes, you can do that, but I'm just saying, we can, if you find that acceptable...
Yes, sir.
You do know that I will do exactly what I tell y'all would do.
Yes, sir.
And this will be no different. So...
Yes, sir.
Give us another chance.
Thanks, sir.
That works. Thank you.
And I think the entire board feels the same way. I know I do. Thank you for your service, number one, okay? I mean, I really do. And it's terrible that you're...
Yes.
Thank you. It's terrible that you've been put in that position, and there's certainly something that the board can do. Now, you know, I'm sure that everyone up on this board agrees that we need to do whatever we can to push this forward and get with our people and talk with them.
Yes, because there's a lot more in District Two that's going to come forth with the same problem of sinkholes. Our neighbor in the neighboring subdivision, they tried to get on the agenda today, but it was too late. And so they're going to be on the agenda next month about the same issue with another builder.
Hopefully, we can get some resolution between now and then.
Yes, sir.
No, you know, one, they come in, at least we'll be, right now, we don't know what to say to you.
Yes, sir.
You know, being honest with you.
Yes, sir.
But like Tommy has said, the entire board wants to make sure that this is taken care of. I'm a builder myself, and I don't really care for that. I'm a commercial builder. I don't build houses.
Yes, sir.
And I got inspectors on mine all the time. They don't allow me to bury nothing, so...
Right.
But at the end of the day, that's not right for you to have to deal with that.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, there's something we can do.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Maybe, hopefully, y'all will have to come before us again.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, I got a text from Mr. Richardson. He's withdrew his request. He will not be speaking today. Next on the agenda, we have three consent items. I'm going to read these consent items, and needless to say, the board can delete or add to the consent items. One of the consent items is a resolution request approval of an agreement for drug treatment counseling service for the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court, which doesn't cost us any money, all that's grant. Two is a resolution request an office to accept the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to be used to purchase equipment to track property and evidence and inventory, which would be the police department. And number three, a resolution request approval of a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for Fairhaven subdivision Phase Two on Elliot Road. So that was the three items. If somebody would consider moving to accept those three items and the resolutions associated with it for consent item.
Some move.
Have a motion from District Four.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, the police department. We have a resolution request an office to declare certain county property as surplus and to approve the disposal of such property. Major Goins.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This resolution is to request the approval to declare county property held by the police department as surplus and to move to approve to get rid of this property. Henry County Police Department obtained a nineteen ninety-two Dodge Dakota pickup truck through asset forfeiture. A copy of that should be attached to the resolution as well. Once we obtained that through the Superior Court, now we're moving to sell this item using the Henry County Purchasing Department, who also uses govdeals.com to auction online property. This is an approved vendor and has an agreement with Henry County. The purchasing department has used this vendor since April sixteenth of two thousand twelve.
We have a resolution to book a resolution board of commissioners, clearing a nineteen ninety-two Dodge Dakota pickup truck as surplus property unauthorized, said vehicle be auctioned off online through the government deals. Somebody move in that direction.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District One.
Second.
Second from District Five. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Airport. Resolution request approval of a professional agreement pertaining to captain improvements at the Henry County Airport. Mr. Ron Burke-Halter.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Henry County has been working since the completion of the runway expansion of the airport and preparing documentation for Phase Two of the runway expansion. Henry County has received documentation from the engineering firm, Croy Engineering, for the design for the expansion. Croy sent this documentation to Georgia Department of Transportation for review and approval. Henry County has received approval from Georgia Department of Transportation to move forward with the process, which I had brought to the board as resolution number fourteen ninety-three on April the fifteenth. All this design work qualifies for ninety-five percent reimbursement through Georgia Department of Transportation and the FAA. The total cost of this project is a hundred three thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars plus reimbursable expenses. The cost breakdown is as follows. Ninety-eight thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents of the total is our G dot FAA reimbursement. Five thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents is the county's portion for the total of the one hundred three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution to book. The Board of Commissioners approving a professional agreement with Croy Engineering pertaining to the captain improvements at the Henry County Airport. Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Human Resources. We have a resolution request award of a bid to purchase the Neo-GOV Insight Enterprise Online Job Application. Mr. Rod Gray, good evening.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a request from the Human Resources Department to request the subscription and provisioning for an online job application and career portal. The request was bid through the purchasing department, and we received one bid for this. The bid was from Neo-GOV for a cost of eighteen thousand, five hundred, which is four thousand, five hundred for one-time provisioning cost and an annual subscription of cost of fourteen thousand. This is an annual contract for the subscription for one year and may be renewed for four years mutually. So the recommendation is to award this project to Neo-GOV for eighteen thousand, five hundred.
Anybody have any questions?
Currently, I have in place.
What we currently have in place now is paper and pencil. So you come in, fill out an application, somebody has to screen it, somebody has to file it, has to be logged. This system takes all of that out of our hands.
Anybody else have any comments?
May I state for the record that funds are available. Funds are available for this in the HR budget.
Do you have a resolution to book, award a bid for the... We have a resolution to book, award a bid for the N E O G O V Insight Enterprise Online Job Application and Career Portal. Somebody move in that direction.
Some move.
Have a motion District Four.
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, thank you.
Thank you.
Community Development, this will be a public hearing. Resolution requesting approval of the proposed FY twenty thirteen Consolidated Annual Performance Report. Shannon, good evening.
Good evening. Sir, as a recipient of C D B G program funding, Henry County is requested to, is required, excuse me, to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, commonly known as the CAPER. This will, this particular CAPER is for fiscal year twenty thirteen. The CAPER provides HUD and the residents of Henry County an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress of the C D B G program in carrying out the priorities and specific objectives identified in the consolidated plan and the appropriate annual action plans. It also describes actions, changes, and accomplishments that occurred during fiscal year twenty thirteen, resulting from the Community Development Block Grant Program funded through HUD. Staff published a public notice for the draft CAPER on August twenty-ninth, and we are currently in the public comment period of fifteen days, which did begin on August twenty-ninth. Copies of the draft CAPER have been made available for public review at numerous locations throughout the county and are current, and is currently on the county's website. This is a public hearing.
Anybody have any comments?
All the locations in the paper, those are the locations these documents are made available, right? Or are they?
The locations where the documents are made available are not all of those locations, but the public notice was made available at all of those locations.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, this constitutes a public hearing, the, uh, before the board, uh, considers approval or rejection of the resolution approving the FY twenty thirteen Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report CAPER for the Community Development Block Grant Program, I will open the floor up for fifteen minutes for anybody to make, uh, make available for any comments, uh, they would like to make surrounding this issue, and if you would, uh, if you wanna be recognized, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will have a second call for a public hearing, anybody'd like to speak at this time? If not, I'm terminating the public hearing, uh, it's been concluded, I declare it's over, and we have a resolution in the book for the board's consideration.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five to approve.
Second.
Second from District One, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a resolution requesting approval of to transmit a letter of agreement to provide electricity and lighting as needed or required, and all maintenance costs for the landscaping at the intersection of S R twenty on East Lake Road at the construction of a roundabout is completed. Mr. McMichaels.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board members. Georgia DOT has requested that the county sign a letter stating our agreement to provide two things. First, the full and entire cost of the electric energy use for any lighting installed as needed, and two, any maintenance costs associated with landscaping of the intersection after construction is complete. They're asking us to do this in order to show support for the consideration of a roundabout as a feasible alternative at State Route Twenty and East Lake Road. This resolution authorizes the chairman to sign this letter. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions, have a question from District Four?
Terry, uh, several, several months ago, we attended a meeting with DOT, and basically, I'm gonna make a comment as opposed to a question. I will ask you what your thoughts were on it. Uh, obviously, we had been trying for a red light intersection at that intersection for a while, but it was my understanding that I took away from the meeting that the only thing that G dot was gonna allow us to have is the roundabout. They would not even entertain the street, uh, the, the, the intersection improvements with a red light. This, did, did you take similar thought in that when we had our meeting with G dot?
What I took away from that was their first approach is, now that you have to show that a roundabout won't work, um, that they're prefer, that you start with a roundabout before they even entertain a traffic signal. And in their opinion, they thought a roundabout would certainly work at that location.
Is it your opinion that we could, uh, make them believe that a roundabout would not work at that location?
I think they're pretty well convinced that a roundabout will work at that location.
So, by virtue of the fact that regardless of what we say to them, they're only, really, at the end of the day, they're only gonna allow a roundabout, and, and, and actually, we're paying for the roundabouts, it's, it's not, they're really not giving us anything, they may be expediting a little bit on that, but several comments were made earlier about the roundabout, and, you know, I, at the end of the day, I don't, I don't, you know, the four-way stop seems to be working pretty good right now, I know there's others that would disagree with that, but my daughter goes through it every morning and every afternoon with four of my grandkids, so it seems to be working better than what was, I was just, uh, concerned that someone would think that this board or certain members of the board, uh, agreed to a roundabout without having, trying to work through or at least have conversation about the, uh, uh, you know, intersection improvement with red lights, so that was what I took away from it, I just wanted to see if you had similar thoughts in there. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner might add to that. Um, they did indicate, too, in that conversation that day that we met with them, that they thought they could expedite, expedite the project much faster as a roundabout as well, that... Uh, and that's when they entertained the thought of a, a multi-way stop, just as an interim measure until the roundabout could be put in.
You're correct, they only allowed us to do the four-way because we agreed that, well, we, it wasn't much of an agreement, they said you're gonna get a roundabout and it's the end of it, but at the end of the day, they agreed to give us the, the four-way stop sign in, in while we were getting everything ready, engineering everything ready, you know, for that. I appreciate it, Terry, I just wanna make sure that, for the record, that, you know, we did what we felt like we could to get the intersection improvement. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What would we have to do if, if the, the board decided we wanna put traffic signals and turn lanes? Just pay for all of it?
I don't know that the board could make that decision, honestly, Chairman, the Georgia DOT is in control of that intersection, we would have to permit it. So, um, we, we asked them for a permit to do the work. If they thought, in their opinion, since the state route is their road and they got jurisdiction, um, if they thought a roundabout was the solution, they would have the right to say, no, we're only, you know, we're not gonna permit a signal, so they would have that option to deny that. I mean, it's, it is a state route and a county road, and they would have the higher authority on that over us.
That's what I took away from the meeting, Mr. Chair, that we were gonna get a roundabout or we wasn't gonna get anything.
Uh, well, that, that, that brings up the question is, how do we get all these other traffic lights on all these other state roads that we pay for? And, and we don't have...
Well, I'll, I'll give you some of the latest ones I know, that same question has been asked at like, uh, Airline and, and Twenty, I believe. And at that time, Georgia DOT has just recently went to the roundabout policy where they have to prove that a roundabout won't work first before they go to a signal. So, anytime before adoption of that policy, you would see an intersection. Uh, another case, you know, sometimes they will do, uh, a signal like the one in Locust Grove. Um, that was an interim, and they call that an interim traffic signal until a roundabout can be planned. So, I've seen that happen as well, but in their solution, the roundabout in the future was a better plan, but they allowed the interim traffic signal there, or the signal there as an interim measure.
The reason I say that, I, uh, up in New Jersey, i- if you, those that's been up there, they have a lot of roundabouts. Uh, roundabouts is not for the weak at heart. Uh, it's not for elderly people, and it's not for young people. Now, i- i- use it correctly, if, if you're familiar with them, they work real good. If you've been to St. Simon's, the most, the busiest intersection is one, two, three, four, you got five roads coming into, right there just north of the, uh, St. Simon's Airport, if you're familiar with it. Uh, you, you, you have to be very bold and you have to pay attention. And there's probably more wrecks, pr- probably, almost wrecks, because you get people stopping when they ought to go, and it's take a gap, give a gap. But once you get familiar with it, it, it works real good, so I'm, I'm just saying that we have somebody with G dot that's really pushing, uh, roundabouts now. Um...
Their, their head traffic, or their traffic department is really pushing roundabouts ahead of signals. They thinks they're, in the long run, it's much safer and sometimes are more economical. Um, for some reasons, like, if you have a, uh, usually, your accidents at a roundabout are not as serious as like a, even an intersection. I know I was, I received a, I received a copy of our fatality log, and just this year, we had a fatality at a red light. So, a red light itself doesn't make them totally safe. Um, red lights, this particular intersection or signal was a sideways collision, and it resulted in a fatality. Roundabout, they're usually, those type of inter, uh, crashes you see are not the T-bones, but they're just rear ends, so not saying you're not gonna have an accident at a roundabout, but sometimes they are, um, not likely to cause serious injury like a, like if somebody runs a red light. I mean, and that does happen, so...
I think a good rule of thumb is, if you have an accident in a roundabout, you're both guilty, I, I think, normally.
I'm not sure about writing citations, I'll...
Well, I, I'm just, uh, and as far as, if we get a motion, I'm gonna discuss some part of it, but I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, because I'm convinced that we don't have another choice other than, we, the, the four-way stop sign scenario is temporary, and a roundabout is, we don't have a choice and we need to do something, so if that's the best we can do, I, I favor traffic lights, I, I really do. If nothing else, people can, they know when it's their turn to go, and they don't have to sit down and negotiate and, and, uh, be in fear about, uh... I, I'd take the bold step, but it, you have to pay attention.
Well, we currently have two roundabouts in the county now, one of them's, of course, the latest one was at Fairview and One Fifty-Five. Um, and then the other roundabout is at, I believe is at Calvin and Unity Grove, and that one's been actually in existence probably close to five years. And, um, you know, we haven't had any complaints about that one, you know, and it's been here the longest. Of course, it's a, you know, very small traffic volume, it's certainly not like East Lake or Twenty, but, um, One Fifty-Five in Fairview would be somewhat comparable to East Lake and Twenty.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, anybody else have any questions? No, we got a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners supporting the consideration of a, uh, roundabout and agreeing to the conditions provided by G dot for the State Route Twenty and East Lake Road Improvement Project.
So move.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, thank you. Have a resolution requesting approval of speed humps to be installed within the Tail Fair subdivision, Terry.
Yes, sir, the required number of residents of Tail Fair subdivision signed a petition in accordance with Henry County Speed Hump Ordinance. Staff of Henry County DOT verified requirements of the ordinance were met. Um, we have included in your package the location of the proposed speed humps, uh, marked on an aerial, so we recommend approval, um, of this petition for speed humps.
We have a resolution in the book, uh, the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing speed humps to be installed within the Tail Fair subdivision. Somebody... I'm sorry. Who, who moved in that direction? Okay, we have a, uh, motion from District Four.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion, all, uh, in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Chairman, Board.
Thank you. Budget, resolution requesting approval of an Amendment One to the fiscal year twenty fifteen budget. Ms. Sorrow, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you, you have a resolution to amend the fiscal year fifteen budget. Um, you know, we amend the budget periodically. This resolution is to decrease the use of fund balance by the amount of five million nine hundred ninety thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars, and to increase the, um, real property tax revenue. That will leave a balance of use of fund balance of one hundred fifty-three thousand one oh seven.
Okay, basically, what this does for my benefit, in order to balance the budget for this year, we use roughly about six million dollars, roughly speaking. Out of fund balance, which some of us refer to that as savings to, to balance the budget. So now, with, with the, uh, change and increase in the millage rate, then that means that we will generate almost six million dollars more than we did last year, so we're just merely taking the six out of fund balance, putting it back into savings, and replacing it with the anticipated collection of taxes.
Yes, sir.
You said an increase in millage rate, I think it's increase in the property.
That was an error.
Increase in property.
In- increase in property tax, but it was a decrease in the millage rate.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to correct that.
Fourteen point, uh, two nine eight was the millage rate.
Okay, we have a, uh, and, and what this will do, once we do this, that will make the, the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget true and correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, to amend the fiscal year budget twenty fourteen to reflect the First Amendment. Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second from District Three, any further discussion? Any, uh, everybody in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, uh, same sign if you oppose it, so move, thank you so much. Next, uh, we have a resolution here. We have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing a deputy county clerk. Uh, reason we do it, and that's right at the moment, our clerk, Shay Mathis, is a little bit under the weather, and, uh, she's on sick leave, and will be for just a short period of time, I hope. Uh, and what this does, uh, at the moment, we don't, we don't have a deputy. And needless to say, uh, if you will notice, every resolution in here calls for, uh, and approves and authorizes the chair to execute all these documents. And if you can appreciate how many documents I'll go through tomorrow, it, it will be this many. Well, also, we have a, uh, resolution that each and every time the chair, uh, signs a document, it has to be attested, the chair's signature has to be attested by the county clerk. And right now, since, uh, she's been incapacitated for several days, we, we have this many documents, uh, that I've signed, and the attorney's signed, and everybody else has signed, but it's missing, uh, her signature, and she's just not in a position now to, to sign it. So, what this resolution does, it's, uh, it gives, uh, the executive assistant to the board, Marilyn Bowles, it gives her the, the, uh, ability, we are appointing her to the deputy clerk, but she's not gonna carry on the duties of the deputy clerk, because she's got her hands full doing her executive assistant, uh, dealing with, with six commissioners and their schedules and whatever else they, uh, use her to do. But, uh, it will, uh, give her the power to, and limited, to attesting the signature of the chairman only. So, what that amounts to, it makes her the deputy clerk, and when I sign all these documents, then she can attest it, and, and we can move on, so I just, if somebody would... We have a resolution, uh, by the board of Henry County to appoint a deputy, uh, county clerk with limitations, if somebody would...
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the resolution, Second District One, any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move, thank you. Uh, next, we have a resolution requesting approval of the First Amendment to the S P L O S, uh, four intergovernmental agreement regarding the issuance of S P L O S debt bonds, Fred.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Good evening. Have before you a, uh, request to amend the S P L O S four intergovernmental agreement, uh, to allow the cities in the county to participate in each issuance, any, of any S P L O S four bond debt at the level each desires. At the present time, the, uh, intergovernmental agreement that was, uh, signed last... At the present time, the Intergovernmental Agreement that was signed last year has within it the fact that everybody is supposed to bond only at the percentage of the amount that they are to receive in proceeds. So as a result, the county, which is 75% of the proceeds, would have to lead with 75% of the bonding. At the present time, the cities have their bonding desires, the county is working on its, and the language as it is in the present Intergovernmental Agreement will not work. The resolution you have and the amendment you have is to take care of that. And then the other is there's another provision to true up the cost of the issuance if there's several debt issues, so that if, for example, the cost of issuance of the first issue is proportionally heavier than on the second, the participants would be adjusted so that each participant would bear the proportion of the total cost of the issuance that their share of the total debt bears to the total debt. A lot of debt, debt, debt. But basically, it just comes down to everybody pairing their fair share based on what they're going to be borrowing. The other problem is that one of the cities is not desiring to bond at this time, the other three are, and as a result of that, they would have to bond under the present language. This amendment basically allows everybody to bond in accordance with their desires, not based on a percentage of the proceeds that they're supposed to receive from the SPOLOSH.
Anybody have any questions? This right here does not set the bondage rate. This right here does not authorize... Henry County is not really putting a dollar amount on the bonds that they will. All this is doing is cleaning it up to where if and when the bonds are applied for, then we will have the Intergovernmental Agreement that spells it out different.
Yeah, it would allow each, the county and the cities, to bond whatever dollar figure they want without a formula being established, as it is now.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Not... We have a resolution, approval of the First Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement and for other related matters. Does somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Five? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Stormwater. Resolution requesting authorization to purchase a smart station survey system. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First resolution I have for you tonight is for the purchase of a LICA smart station surveying system. The FY 1415 budget appropriated the formation of a new position at Stormwater called a GIS Stormwater Inspector. The role of this position is to go out and aid in our MS4 requirement of inspecting our storm drain systems. One of the things that we didn't want to do was just go out and visually inspect them and not collect that data so we can add it into our GIS database. The smart station system that we're proposing to purchase will allow one individual to go out and perform the traditional function of a two-man survey crew. It is an automated robotic total station with GPS built in. I would say 95% of the time, it will be able to allow just one person to go out and collect the survey data that we need as part of this requirement. We administered the bid through ROD and our purchasing department. We had three responsive bidders that were qualified and asked that you authorize the purchase of this equipment with LICA Geo Systems Incorporated for the amount of $34,472. The money is available in our, let's see, capital equipment budget inside Stormwater. Be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
Anybody got any comments or questions? Not without a resolution, Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the purchase of a... How do you pronounce that?
LICA smart station.
LICA smart station surveying system.
So move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second District Three? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we're going to have an appeal at the Stormwater interpretation of the ULDC Section 8.04.02(c) by Bullard Land Planning Incorporated, Wade Stroud.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. If I could, go ahead. At this time, we have the packet that was submitted by Stormwater. Also, our county attorney has two packets that were submitted by the applicants. I'd like each of those to be entered into the official record for this appeal. Bullard Land Planning submitted Stormwater plans for Light of the World edition on May 28th of 2013. These plans were reviewed and denied by Henry County Stormwater Management due to the fact that Section 8.04.02(c) of our Unified Land Development Code require hydraulic-related elements of a construction plan set be stamped by a registered professional engineer. Mr. Bullard was kind enough to have those plans stamped by a registered professional engineer. They were resubmitted to our department and were approved on July 16th of 2013. The appeal came after the approval. The requirement that we have inside our ULDC is a product of Henry County being a member of the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District. This district was enacted by legislation in 2001 on April the 5th. Each of the 16 counties and municipalities that are comprised in this district were required to adopt a series of model ordinances as written by the district. They were set up to establish uniform guidelines to help ensure regional watershed protections as most drainage systems pass through multiple jurisdictions. The failure and the issue that we run into is that there's language inside the district that says failure to substantially comply with these model ordinances would result in the inability to obtain new or expand water withdrawals or wastewater discharges, the renewal of NPDS municipal stormwater permits, and potentially jeopardize any Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority grant or loan fundings. Mr. Bullard and his group contend that this ordinance that's been adopted by Henry County as a result of the requirements from the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District is unlawful and conflicts with the Georgia constitutional and statutory law. They have requested that you guys hear their appeal tonight as far as the respect to our ULDC on this issue. Be glad to answer any questions that you guys may have of me at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm going to refer to counsel that, looking through this package, there is many, many, many references to case law, Attorney General's opinions, et cetera, et cetera. So I can tell you, I'm going to rely upon legal counsel to guide me and I'm sure the Board as to... We're going to hear the appeal. But I guess this would be the proper avenue for me to share this portion of it, so I will treat this like any other appeal. So at this time, we will... I will ask that the attorney or Bullard, or who's representing Bullard, to come forth and state your case.
And Mr. Chairman, before they begin, I want to make... I'm going to go ahead and just state what I'm going to consider unless you guys tell me otherwise, is going to be part of your record. Your record is going to include these two big books, which are labeled Volume One and Volume Two, submitted by Mr. Zekler and Mr. Nix of Maddox, Nix, Bowman and Zekler, PC. It's also going to include the documents that are included within your minute book, which you've referenced, because these large volumes include some information that's not in your minute book. And it will also include the engineer's certificate or the Stormwater Plan that was signed and sealed by the engineer and that was approved on July 16th of 2013, and whatever else they may offer during...
I appreciate the housekeeping gesture, I mean sincerely. I think also, we have submitted a certified copy of the ordinance.
Yes, yes, that's included within Volume Two. I made it part of your Volume Two.
And also, the two volumes contain the constitutional objections and our legal arguments.
And they do. I'll state, to help you clarify your record, I don't want to get caught up in the documents and just see if we can get those taken care of.
Neither do we. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is John Nix, 945 Bank Street, Conyers, Georgia. Here with my law partner, Mr. Robert Zekler, tonight. I'm also here with Mr. Bullard, who is the appealing party, and I also am with, up at the bench, I mean, at the podium, Ron Sawhill, who is a professor at the University of Georgia. Now that we've perfected the record, which was critical, you can tell that a lot of effort has gone into putting some documents in front of you on a subject that our client feels very strongly about. This all boils down to an ordinance adopted by Henry County in good faith, I am confident, based on a model ordinance that was issued by the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District. And it's a model ordinance. But what that model ordinance does and what the ordinance that you adopted accomplishes, it preempts landscape architects from sealing off on post-development stormwater plans. The problem with that prohibition is it's contrary to statutory law adopted by the General Assembly that says, in our opinion, that's exactly what they can do, that their profession allows them to seal off on post-development stormwater plans. Now, this has been an ongoing discussion or debate in many jurisdictions. What's interesting about the district that promulgated this model ordinance that you all have adopted, at least in part, the part that prohibits them from sealing these kinds of plans, is that there are 18 other jurisdictions that are contained in this packet of information. Of those 18 jurisdictions, eight of them, even though they are located within this geographic area that makes up the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District, eight of them have ordinances that allow landscape architects to do the very thing that your ordinance preempts Mr. Bullard from doing. An additional 10 jurisdictions, and the list is there, I'm not going to read it to you, additional 10 jurisdictions, despite the fact their ordinance doesn't specifically allow landscape architects to do that kind of work, they allow them to do that work. So we believe that is a stunning example of where jurisdictions have not adhered to the model ordinance, despite the hook in the model ordinance and the legislation, that thou shall, as a local government within this district, adhere to this model ordinance or else certain things will befall you. So as far as the motivation, we take exception to that being rational simply because there are 18 other jurisdictions that are engaging in the practice that's preempted by this model ordinance. I believe it's more important tonight for you to hear rather than from a lawyer, something from two gentlemen that are very, very keen on the issues that are presented. The first one is Mr. Bullard, and he's a landscape architect and he's going to tell you a little about himself and his issues. And then without pausing, I want Professor Ron Sawhill, who's an associate professor at the University of Georgia, to speak to you. And I understand we're under some kind of time constraint, so... But maybe we're not. But we are going to try and be concise because we have been here with you since 6:30, but we do want to get our message across to you. Thank you. Here's Mr. Bullard.
Good evening. I will try to be concise. Again, my name is Bobby Bullard. I have been licensed to practice landscape architecture in this state since March of 1990. I, along with my fellow landscape architects in this state, are bringing this appeal before you tonight because despite my education, my experience and my reputation, I am being denied my right to practice my profession here in Henry County. On May 24th, 2013, I submitted site plans and stormwater plans for the Light of the World International Church with my landscape architecture seal on them, just as I have done in the past here in Henry County. But this time, my work was denied until I had an engineer's seal on the plans. Why, you may ask, why? Why would a landscape architect, who had been historically been allowed to submit stormwater plans in Henry County and throughout North Georgia, all of a sudden not be allowed to practice their profession after decades of being able to do so? Within this argument, and actually more thoroughly in that the record that we have submitted before you of over 1,600 pages of evidence, you see before you, we have made a clear establishment of the following facts. Number one, prior to December 7th, 2006, we as landscape architects did have some isolated instances where we needed to educate certain jurisdictions on the law and a landscape architect's education and expertise before having our seals approved. But I have never, and I repeat, never, had my seal rejected because each jurisdiction recognized our expertise. Many other landscape architects in this record have demonstrated the same. Number two, prior to the early 2000s, world-renowned landscape architects from right here in the state of Georgia recognized that the traditional engineering practice of concentrating and dumping contaminated water directly onto downstream property owners was harming our environment by literally destroying the stream environments downstream of these projects. As a result, these same landscape architects developed innovative solutions to treat, infiltrate and manage stormwater to cleaner standards, and they pleaded with all those in the state of Georgia to correct this policy of gross professional negligence. Finally, the Georgia Legislature recognized the seriousness of the situation and created district water planning boards, charging them with the task of implementing rules to handle stormwater in a more environment-friendly way. Ironically, one of those boards, the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District that we had just heard about, of which Henry County is a member, created a model ordinance that excluded the very professionals that brought the solutions to the table in the first place, landscape architects. It is a grave injustice denying me and my fellow professionals of our rights to practice our profession. And more importantly, it is denying the citizens of Georgia access to the very professionals that need to be involved in stormwater now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name's Ron Sawhill, 2960 Flat Rock Road, Watkinsville, Georgia. In the letter, in this package that was submitted for your consideration, I have a letter, I think it's item number 23 in there, that provides some detail about the instruction that landscape architecture students receive regarding stormwater management. And what I attempted to do was to provide not only a description of how much instruction they receive in that regard, but more importantly, the nature of that instruction. Landscape architects are different from engineers, and we look at the landscape in a very different way. Landscape architecture at its core has the principle that we are stewards of the land. And of course, the land is made up of water, land, air and all the things that live on it. Consequently, to... Our aim is to understand the land, be able to design it and to manage it in such a way that we maintain the natural ecosystem, sustain it, while being able to apply human uses to that site. To that end, our education is a very integrated type, where they learn all the technical things, but they spend a lot of time in studio trying to figure out how this fits the land. As a result, we have landscape architects that leave. Some of them are very technically oriented. They focus on stormwater management, as I have. We have others that are very much culturally integrated kind of focus. Those things are not exclusive of each other because when we design the land, anytime we shape it, anytime we change it, it affects water flows and it affects how people use it. And so we're interested in how those things go together. As you go through the package, you'll see that each year of that program, which currently is a five-year program, is involved in ever-increasing complexity of these types of sites. How do we solve these things? Landscape architecture students are trained in residential community design, subdivision development, commercial development design, regional planning, road design, garden design, recreation design, a whole range of things, with an understanding of soils and plants and construction materials and processes, soil erosion and sediment control, and integrated into all of that is stormwater management. Like engineers, not all landscape architects are. Like engineers, not all landscape architects are focused on stormwater. I think that some of the concern in the past is, we're a small profession. We're not, we're not an old profession. We're only about a hundred years old. And so, we're pretty well misunderstood by a lot of folks. But just like engineers, as I said, not all of them are focused on stormwater management. Landscape architects are not either. And I guess my concern, and the things that I have seen as I've been around the state, is a concern about, well, what happens if a landscape architect that doesn't know stormwater management stamps a stormwater drawing? I think the real concern should be that, are these people licensed by the state as a professional? And have they met the minimum requirement that the state sets for those qualifications? A professional should be expected to exercise professional judgment and act responsibly, ethically, within their profession, and not go beyond their capabilities. And I think that if we look at how the practice of landscape architecture has occurred in the state, that's what we see. As Bobby had kind of mentioned, the nature of stormwater management has changed, particularly over the last twenty-five years. The former kind of group-it-together, put-it-in-a-pipe-and-dump-it-out process has resulted in the damaged landscape that we live in, the ravaged streams, and all the things that we're trying to repair now. The integrated green infrastructure, which is the current thinking in stormwater management, is actually something that landscape architects have been proponents of for many, many years. And these things require not only the understanding of rates and volumes, but of how all these things meet on the land. How do you integrate soils, plants, people? And that's what landscape architects are particularly good at. You, as officials, and all the ones that I have presented to before, you're involved in trying to promote the health, safety, and welfare of your community. You need, on your side, all the professionals who can help you to accomplish those things. You don't want to go into a fight with one hand tied behind your back. The state of Georgia has licensed landscape architects to be able to perform stormwater management within the scope of their services for design on the land. And I just encourage you to consider that the seal of a landscape architect can provide you with those opportunities, not to exclude anyone else, but to provide that whole, full range, full package of abilities in your arsenal as you move forward with developing and preserving your community. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I understand under y'all's rules on an appeal that there is time to reserve if someone's speaking in opposition. Is that, is that the rule?
I'm not familiar with opposition, because I don't think this is considered a public hearing, but it is, has to be conducted in public. So I don't, I might be corrected on that, but I don't think this constitutes a public hearing.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out a couple of things, just so you understand the decision the board is going to be asked to make. The question, or the appeal before you is whether or not you are going to reverse or uphold the denial or the rejection of stormwater, of the Stormwater Department, of the stormwater management plan submitted under the seal of Mr. Bullard, the landscape architect. That's what you're, that's ultimately what you're being asked to do on the appeal. Those plans were resubmitted later, and my understanding is substantially the same plans were resubmitted later and approved under the seal of a professional engineer. So the decision for you to make is whether or not you should reverse, uphold, reverse in part, or take any other action on the refusal to approve the initial set of stormwater plans. Now, it's my understanding that that, those plans have ultimately been approved, and the project is ongoing, it's some stage of construction. I don't know if construction's begun, but the stormwater management plan has been approved, and the project's ongoing, so we're not holding up a project as we sit here.
As I understand it, reading through this, the project is not an issue now, because it's already been resolved and it's been approved.
That's right.
What I'm reading in here is, this appeal is contesting the constitutionality of our ordinance.
Ultimately, that's the question that someone will be asked to answer.
Okay.
And the issue is whether or not the county's ordinance, which requires professional engineer to stamp the stormwater management plans, violates the state law that allows landscape architects to prepare and sign some storm drainage plans. I don't know exactly what the text of the statute is, but it's in the materials. As you well know, the county can't, the county can't restrict something that the state restricts. If, once the state has preempted us, that, that belongs to the state. So the question is whether or not our ordinance is preempted by the state law. And there's, there's not a whole, I think we can disagree on how much guidance the courts have provided us. The Attorney General has avoided this direct question. The Attorney General was asked, on behalf, I think, of the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District, to give an opinion, and he backed off and didn't really give a direct opinion on it. But he did point out, there's one Georgia Supreme Court case that seems to indicate that the Supreme Court found that a county could allow, or could prohibit professional engineers, or I'm sorry, prohibit land surveyors from performing some of the services that the state statute seems to allow them. It's an odd little decision. It's a one-page decision with not a whole lot of explanation, when usually the Supreme Court gives a lot more analysis. So it's, that case seems to be a bit of an anomaly. There's not a whole lot of guidance by the courts, and not a whole lot of guidance by the Attorney General, which wouldn't be binding on us, anyway. That's just one guy's opinion. So that's, that's what you're left to decide, is, should you allow landscape architects to sign off on the plans, despite the language of your statute? If you're going to do that, in this instance, you ought to go on later and revise the statute, or revise your ordinance to make it clear that that's what you're wanting to do. But ultimately, that decision's up to you at this stage, and I'm sure that if it doesn't go the way the appellant seek, then somebody, some other court will get to make that decision as well.
At this moment, what would be your recommendation to this board?
My recommendation right now is to conclude the hearing, make sure you've got all the evidence you need, and let's take some time to digest it. I want to go, I want to make sure that you've all seen this big package, that you may not have all had the opportunity to review.
I have not seen that.
And, and put this back on the agenda to simply vote on your decision at the next meeting. And I think the next meeting will be the evening meeting in October.
The evening of 21st.
The hearing will be concluded.
Twenty-first.
You'll take no more evidence. You'll take no more argument. You'll simply vote on your ultimate disposition of this case.
Okay. Is any, I'm going to look, and what I want to do, I want to make sure we prepared to do that, and that way, we can let them finish up and submit any kind of evidence or talks or whatever you'd like.
To make it a little easier in the decision-making process, a really good record, from our perspective, on behalf of our clients, been compiled, and we'll rest on the record. We won't make any further argument. The agitator in me wants to, but the professional representing these fellows behind me says, we've got a good record and we'll rest on it. So, thank you.
Well, with all due respect, I think that we, you're looking at five non-lawyers up here, even though some of us think we have legal minds, it's untrained legal minds. But it, obviously, the serious debate's going to be between legal, trained legal minds and trained legal minds, and, and whatever they come up with, and that's what we're going to do. So I would suggest that we consider, since you concluded all the evidence has been presented with no other arguments, that we postpone a consideration for a decision in this matter, and conclude the hearing, and put this back on the agenda for consideration on October the 21st, 2014. It would take a motion to do that.
Absolutely.
Have a motion, District Four?
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask that the recording, make sure that this is on the agenda for the 21st meeting. Thank you so much. Next, under C, which was an amendment, we have a resolution by the Board of Commissioners, stormwater maintenance agreement between Henry County and McDonough Global LLC.
Nice to see you.
And we'll give them a moment to exit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this will be the last item I have for you tonight. I appreciate you allowing this to be heard. What you have is a resolution for the chairman to sign an amendment to a stormwater maintenance agreement between Henry County and McDonough Global. Henry County enters into a maintenance agreement with all commercial property owners. It's incumbent upon the commercial property owners to maintain their stormwater infrastructure. They have to make sure their pipes are clean. They have to maintain their detention ponds and keep those clean. Henry County does have enforcement rights to go out and inspect those ponds, and if we find them overgrown, we can request and write those businesses up, and request that they cut those ponds. Failure to do so, eventually, Henry County can take it upon itself to go out, cut those ponds, and seek reimbursement from those individuals. It's our standard maintenance agreement that we have with all commercial property owners. The issue in this one is somewhat unique. McDonough Global LLC has a loan on the property, and the U.S. Small Business Association will be funding approximately twenty-three percent of this loan. We have some language in our standard agreement that has a hold harmless clause in it, and according to federal regulations, the U.S. Small Business, or the SBA, as they're called, they can't have that language in there. What they've asked us to do, and what they've done, is they've drafted an amendment that minces those words and takes that out, but what it still does, it still allows Henry County to maintain our enforcement ability against the current property owner and any future property owners. The only time the amendment takes precedent is if there's a foreclosure. At that time, if there's a foreclosure, obviously, the first lien holder and the second lien holder would take ownership of the property. And what we didn't want to have happen was Henry County to not have the ability to protect ourselves from collecting stormwater fees, and also making sure that any sort of maintenance was performed on the facility if the banks were the owner. The SBA has been gracious enough to include in their amendment that they recognize that they will still be responsible for any stormwater assessments and any maintenance fees associated with it in the event of a default. And again, the amendment only occurs and is only enforceable in the event of a default while SBA is a holder of that second lien. Be glad to answer any questions you guys may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As a business owner in Henry County, we provide jobs, we provide services, we provide a healthy tax base. And yet, it seems like every time something comes up, then we're required to even do more. We pay the same thing for our stormwater fees as that subdivision that our department goes out and cleans up their retention pond. Yet, we don't take advantage of the school systems, and we don't take advantage of the services. I think it's said that a business probably uses one dollar's worth of services for every three dollars in tax we pay. And yet, it seems like that every time we turn around, a business getting hit again, I don't know these guys, I don't have any, I don't have a dog in that fight. Just want to make the comment that we need to be careful with our businesses. I mean, you know, it seems like to me, it's like myself, I mean, I have to take care of mine, but yet, I provide jobs, services, I provide goods, I provide a healthy tax base for the county for my commercial properties. There again, it seems like, well, let's just throw this off on the builder, or on the, not the builder, not the builder, because builder's gone.
Right.
But let's throw it off on that business owner that owns that business. I don't, I don't, I don't feel like that, at the end of the day, that we're doing our businesses right. It just doesn't seem like to me that we're doing them like we should. That's, that's a comment. It's not meant to promote any dialogue between you and I. It's just that every time I see something like this, I think, okay, what else are you going to bring? Not you.
Yes.
But what else is the government going to bring to discourage business owners from being able to do what they do, which is provide goods, services, and a healthy tax base for the county? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners, stormwater maintenance agreement between Henry County and McDonough Global LLC.
Approved.
We have a motion from District Three to approve.
Thank you.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we're moving down to Chairman. I have no comments. Any Commissioner have any comments at this time for any reason?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment. I don't know if anybody's seen the news, but between the Henry County Development Authority and Governor Deal, they announced today that we're bringing 450 jobs to McDonough. It's a call center, and this is something the Development Authority's been working on for about a year, so we're happy to get them.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, County Manager comments. Sherry, I think you're going to submit, present a resolution approval of the open records officer, and it's listed in mine as handout one. I don't know what is listed in y'all's.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman and Board members. It should be listed as handout one, and I hope that everyone does have a copy of it. I know it's been a long night, so I'll try to make it as quickly as possible getting through this. But what I have for you this evening is a resolution appointing a open records officer for the county, and establishing who the points of contact will be in various departments within the county. So again, the resolution is just a resolution by the Board of Commissioners to appoint an open records officer, and in this case, it will be Stephanie Braun, who currently serves as the legal office coordinator. Additionally, within the resolution, you will find that there are various departments that are listed, the records custodian, and an alternate. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Let me ask you this. Under Three, it says, "All written requests for records made under the Act directed to the county shall be made to the open record officers." Does that mean the one that's on this list, or does that mean the officer?
It should be the officer. What typically will happen is the requests will come in to Ms. Braun. She'll determine which department needs to respond, and then that information will be forwarded on to the appropriate department liaison and/or court alternate.
What if you have a request that's not, that's not in writing?
The law does not state that open records have to be in writing. An individual can actually come in and request it verbally. I know that there are some departments that do request open records to be in writing, just to ensure that the information that has been requested is provided or presented, but there is no requirement that it has to be in writing.
Reason I'm saying it said, "All written requests for the records made under this Act directed to the county shall be made," okay, who do they make a record request to if it's not in writing?
Well, what we can do is just strike the word written and just put "all requests" for records, and that will include written and/or verbal requests.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to confuse things. The way it's written would allow somebody to either call Ms. Brown or those individuals listed in each department. Sometimes, people make a request specifically about, well, animal control. And we've set this up so that they can make those requests directly to the animal control department, or they can make it to Ms. Braun. Either, either one would be permitted under the existing language. That's why it references officers, because Ms. Brown, Ms. Braun is the officer, the others are specific offices, officers for their departments, if that makes sense. So they could make it to either department. And as far as a telephone call makes, if someone calls any department and requests documents within that department, that is an open records request. It has to be responded to. We're trying to, we're going to try to encourage people to centralize them, so we can get a tracking system in place even for the phone calls. My understanding is, the way it's, it's worked historically, is we're tracking the written requests, but there's no real tracking system in place for the verbal requests. requests, but there's no real tracking system in place for the verbal requests. The statute, the Open Records Act, actually treats the verbal requests a little differently. If they're not put into writing, they can't be enforced in the same way a written request can be made. And what we're going to try to do is make sure that we have a system in place that even a verbal, a phone call, or a walk-in request gets converted into some writing, some sort of a log form or something else, so that at least internally, it can be tracked.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comment? If not, have a resolution, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, for the purpose of naming open record offices and alternate open record offices and for other purposes.
So move.
Have a motion, District Five.
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Attorney, you have any comments?
No, sir, no comments.
Upcoming meeting, Tuesday, October 7, 9:00 a.m. meeting, has been canceled. Reason being, that's the school fall break. Tuesday, October 21, at 6:30 p.m., is a regular meeting. Tuesday, November 4, at 9:00 a.m. And Tuesday, November 18, 6:30 p.m., is a regular board meeting. Somebody move, we adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion, District Three. Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All opposed, same sign. So move.